Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Temecula Planning Commission. Could we have a flag salute, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you guys would please stand, place your right hand over your heart, and join me here in the pledge. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Hegel?
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Here.
Vice Chair Charlie Trejo?
Here.
Chairman Watts?
Here.
And we have one excused absence from Commissioner Telesio.
Very good, thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is public comment. A total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the commission secretary, and then if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. We have three speakers tonight. First one is...I don't know if I can even...I would not do justice to this if I tried to say it, so Luzantira Vista.
I am.
I'm sorry, I don't want to mispronounce your name. Could you say it for us, please?
Yes, Servan Javahizadeh.
Thank you, Servan.
Basically, I'm a disabled Army veteran, and I like my safety. I like the trees in front of my house, my condo, and the barrier between the trees and, you know, people walking across the street of the park and apartments that are being built across the street from my house. You know, it's just, you know, removing the trees and putting a sidewalk would have put a burden on me and my...everybody else that lives by my house, basically. So I would like to consider maybe remove, you know, digging them out and then putting them back closer to, you know, putting them back in the ground, but I don't want them to be taken out. They're like sixty-foot trees, and you guys want to, you know, put twenty-five-foot trees, you know, instead of when you guys take them and move them out. So I would like, you know, that...say that.
Which one is for you?
Tierra Vista Road, 27727. Tierra Vista Road, that's the condo.
Well, we'll...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I will go ahead and mark that down. That's a Public Works issue, and there's a CIP project that he's referring to that is going to be putting in sidewalk on that portion of Yenez, so I'll have it noted.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Jason Ruiz. And once again, I'll apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce your name, please.
No, you did good. So, yeah, we just wanted to discuss that project, and obviously, nobody wants our trees that have been there for four years to get cut down. And we're just pretty much asking the city if they could, you know, at least put in some kind of a fence, a barrier, provide us with that privacy and that security. We live right across the street from Duck Pond. We call it Protest Park. There's always a lot of activity protesters and people honking, and we just feel like if those trees are going to be pulled out, put in a public sidewalk where people are walking through our private property, we'd just like some kind of a barrier.
We will pass on both of your comments to Public Works, and they will probably be in touch with you, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Is that okay, Ron?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Ernest Bellenbaum.
Thank you. I believe that the sidewalk from...or along Yenez Road from Rancho Highland to Tierra Vista really does not need to be a concrete sidewalk. You could put in hard-packed sand, just like you have over here currently between Rancho California Road and the Starbucks right along Old Town Front Street. That way, you would not have to tear out any trees. You wouldn't have to pour any concrete. And that should be sufficient. It'd be quite pedestrian-friendly, and there really shouldn't be any problem doing it that way. No trees removed and no problem with Americans with Disabilities Act or anything else. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We will pass your comments on, too. I'll hand these over to you at the end of the meeting, Ron.
Thank you.
This is a project that did not come before the Planning Commission. A lot of the conditions and development proposals on that project were negotiated between the applicant and our staff, so some things may already be locked in as far as what they can or can't do without changing the contract, but we will have someone contact you folks and see where we can go from here. Thank you. Okay, no more speakers?
I would like to speak, please.
Do you want to speak?
I would like to, if possible.
Did you fill out a card?
I did not, and you know that with the protocol.
Okay, well, you can come up, state your name, and I'll ask you to fill one of these out after the fact, then.
My name's Ken Roycroft. I represent Mercedes-Benz Temecula. I know some of you. Thank you.
Excuse me, you represent who?
I'm Mercedes-Benz Temecula.
Oh, okay.
And so, we just got a notification the other day in regards to the Winchester...one second, sorry, guys. It's called the Winchester Hills LLC Initiative that's on in front of the Planning Commission tonight. We're trying to get a better handle of what that looks like. We're having some challenges already with the building project that's on our road.
Excuse me. If you were going to talk on the agenda item?
Yes.
We will call you up at that point?
Okay, even better. Okay, great. I don't know the agenda, so...
That's all right, not a problem. It'll be more pertinent that way when we discuss the item. We'll call you back up. Okay, no speakers. We will go with the consent calendar, so we do not have any speakers. I will dispense with reading the admonition on the consent calendar. We have minutes from our last meeting of October nineteenth as the only item on our consent calendar. Can I have a motion on adopting that?
I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
Moved by Commissioner Ruiz, seconded by Commissioner Charlie Trejo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's four to zero in the affirmative on that one. Our next item tonight is public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the project in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with a decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within fifteen calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Item number two on the agenda tonight is long-range planning project number LR22-0182, amending Title V and Seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code as detailed in Ordinance 2023-...attached here as Exhibit A. Could we have a staff report, Mr. Collins, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Today, I'll be presenting to you the annual Title Seventeen and, in this case, Title V update. A little bit of background, the Temecula Municipal Code was originally adopted by the Temecula City Council in 1990. Since its adoption, the Temecula City Council has periodically made amendments to various sections of the code to improve its clarity, improve processes, and implement state law. The Planning Commission is required, per Government Code Section 65800, to review and make recommendations to the City Council regarding zoning regulations and amendments to Title Seventeen, the Development Code, of the Temecula Municipal Code. Title V, Business License and Regulations, these changes, although not under the purview of the Planning Commission, are included to provide clarity and additional information to the Planning Commission regarding the totality of the changes proposed. Our proposed changes, starting with Title V, we're going to clarify Section 5.22.120 exemptions, and the ordinance would clarify that chair massage businesses are only exempt from the maximum number of massage establishments, and no conversion of chair massage businesses are permitted. A new massage business license would be required. The ordinance will update Section 5.22.080, Subsection B, Operations, and it would require all massage establishments to establish and maintain a dedicated telecommunication device physically located at the business and capable of dialing out to emergency services, specifically 911. Title Seventeen changes. In Subsection 17.14, our Open Space Conservation District, we're going to...the proposed ordinance would modify the Open Space Conservation Zoning Designation definition to include passive recreational uses and limit profit-generating activity to a limited term. Table 17.14030, Schedule of Permitted Uses, would modify the table to include bicycle paths as a permitted use in open space and open space conservation zoning designations. Additionally, it clarifies that communication and microwave installations are not permitted in any open space zoning designation. Title Seventeen continued. Section 17.34.010, Definitions, we're going to be consolidating guesthouse definition with that of the accessory dwelling unit and expands the definition of ADU to include an efficiency unit and manufactured home in accordance with state law. We are going to add definitions for recreation uses, active and recreation uses passive, and we are going to modify the definition of alcoholic beverage manufacturer to include the accessory use of a single food truck at their location subject to the requirements of Riverside County Ordinance Number 580 in the Temecula Municipal Code. Title Seventeen continued. Section 17.16070, approve specific plans. We're just going to be updating the numbers of the adopted specific plans to include Uptown and Altair. Table 17.22.136B, Schedule of Permitted Uses for our Plan Development Overlay Four, would implement the requirements of Ordinance Number 22-06, the Live Entertainment Ordinance. And then the same for PDO Number Ten in Table 17.22.216B, we would implement the same requirements of Ordinance Number 22-06, the Live Entertainment Ordinance. Changes continued. In our residential districts, we're going to remove guesthouse and approve residential accessory use. ADUs will be used in its place. In Table 1706050A, our Residential Accessory Structures, we're going to remove guesthouse and associated note from the table, and ADUs will be used instead. In Table 17.22.116, Schedule of Permitted Uses and Plan Development Overlay Number Two, would remove guesthouse and secondary dwelling units and add ADU as an approved by right accessory use. Seventeen continued. Section 17.23050, ADU Standards, would require that all utility equipment such as window heating or cooling devices be screened from public view, and Section 17.23050, ADU Standards, is going to incorporate the changes of AB 345, which is a separate conveyance of ADUs from the primary residence. Section 17.04010, Conditional Use Permits, would require all establishments to have a conditional use permit that includes the onsite consumption of alcohol to physically post their CUP to include conditions of approval. Continued. Section 1710020, the Supplemental Development Standards, it's going to clarify that the 200-foot separation from a car wash and residential property is to the residential property line, inclusive of vacuum equipment, air compressors, hydraulic, or pneumatic, or electric motors, drive aisles, parking aprons, and other noise generating devices. Additionally, in the same section, 1710020, we're going to implement some pretty basic parking garage standards. And we've continued again. We have our exempt signs, Section 17.28050. We're going to add a reference to Section 17.08050H for commercial flagpole heights lim...height limits, keeping that at fifty feet. In Table 17.03010, Planning and Zoning Approval Authority, we're going to require all modification applications to a CUP go before a public hearing for consideration. No more staff-level approvals. And the last change, Table 1708030, Schedule of Permitted Uses in Commercial Office and Industrial Districts, we're going to correct the reference for adult businesses. And staff has identified a correction in Section Nineteen of the draft ordinance, Subsection C, Flags, of Section 17.28.050, Exempt Signs. As written, it currently references a seventy-five-foot limit for flagpoles. As amended, Section Nineteen of the ordinance, Subsection C, Flags, of Section 17.28050, Exempt Signs shall state, Subsection C, Flags, Subsection One, a flagpole shall not exceed the zoning district height limit set forth in the Municipal Code Section 17.08.050H. I'll terminate that. Additionally, we'll add a section to the ordinance to correct Subsection H, Flags, of Section 17.08.050, Special Use Regulations and Standards, to state H flagpoles, a maximum height of fifty feet. Staff brought this ordinance to the Planning Commission Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee on November 2nd, 2022, and staff is scheduled to present the proposed ordinance to the City Council General Plan Update Ad-hoc Subcommittee on December 13th of this year. Staff has determined that there is no possibility that the adoption of this ordinance will have a significant effect on the environment. Accordingly, this ordinance is not subject to the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Section 15061B3. Staff recommendation is to adopt the Planning PC Resolution as amended, recommending that the City Council adopt the ordinance and find the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per Section 15061B3. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mark. Before I open the public hearing, do we have any questions, Mark?
Okay, just maybe some clarification. So, on the chair massage businesses, it's that they are not...they're not part of the maximum for massage businesses, correct?
Correct. They are exempt from that cap.
But they can't...they can't change to a massage business?
Right now, there's a little bit of ambiguity in the code. This will seal that shut. There will be no option for that.
Okay, and then the next part on that, so they haven't had, like, communication devices in their places?
There's no requirement for it in the code, and we've had some issues recently with some of the inspections not being able to contact the businesses when they are not open during regular business hours.
Oh.
So this way, there's...we know there's a device there that we're capable of reaching out to, and they are as well.
Okay. And then, it said in there something about definitions for passive recreation?
Yes, ma'am.
Like, what do you consider that? I did read some of them, but...so you're just...you're updating that with those definitions are?
Yes, ma'am. The definition will read Recreation Use of Passive means low-intensity outdoor activities such as walking, hiking, bicycling, picnicking, nature education, and bird watching. These uses do not require substantial infrastructure and require little to no utilities to operate.
Okay, yeah, I remember reading that. Okay, then, the next thing. So, ADU versus guesthouse, is this just kind of a semantics? Like, we don't want to have guesthouse in there anymore because we are required to put in ADU? Is that what?
The ADUs and the guesthouse, they're very similar in their...what they're allowed to be as far as size, the limits of setbacks, everything like that. What we're doing with this is ADUs allow us to get credit for the units being built in arena numbers.
Right.
There's no size difference. The maximum unit size for a guesthouse or a secondary dwelling unit is 1,200 square feet, the same as our ADU. The ADUs provide a little bit of extra options for the homeowner. It gives them reduced setbacks, reduced fees, and then some reduced development standards as well. So we are looking at this as kind of a win-win for the citizens and the city getting credit for those units being built.
Okay. And then, car wash, so it's only 200 feet to residential line?
Property line, yes, ma'am. Right now, there's a little bit of...it says the 200 feet to residential, but it doesn't specify property line or structure. So we're going to take it to the more conservative, the property line.
Yeah, doesn't seem very far. Okay, and then, the flag. So, you know the flag at the Shell station? How tall is that?
That predates myself. I don't know off the top of my head.
That flag has been there forever. Is that going to have to be...
No, it'd be an existing nonconformity.
Okay, but do you know how tall it is? I just saw you have, like, a reference?
Offhand, I would have to look up the approval on it.
Really? Because it is the coolest. It is like the coolest. Okay. Yeah, let's not get rid of that flag. And then, my last question is, I think it was one of your last slides on adult businesses. Can you...
Yes, ma'am.
When you say "yes, ma'am," it makes me feel old.
I'm sorry. Uncle Sam beat me into...
But that's okay. Are you from the South?
Okay. The adult business reference in Table 17.08030, Schedule of Permitted Uses for Commercial and Office Districts, the first line for a business...for adult businesses, it states Subject to Chapter 17.09. That is incorrect. It should be 5.09. So we're just correcting that reference.
Just numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I don't have any additional questions. I said on the Subcommittee, so we went through this in extreme detail before. I just didn't want it to seem like all this information was presented in...we're good. You know, we went through this in some heavy detail already.
Okay, I do have one question. On the posting of CUPs and the conditions, does that affect existing businesses already that are under CUPs? Will they have to do it, or are they not required to now? That's kind of a convoluted question. Are the businesses now required to post their CUPs and the conditions?
Right now, they are not.
Okay.
They're not required to.
So those that are already existing, will they need to become compliant with this language's section?
That's a really good question. I would have to look into that, but I...generally, we have things that are considered more like operational standards, such as just, you know, post something to be something that you can impose on a business because it's not too onerous. If it requires, you know, structural changes or things like that, we generally don't impose those obligations, but we would...I'll look into that, and we can certainly report back.
Well, my concern is simply from the businesses, if they're going to have questions on that, so we should be prepared for it.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, any...no other questions of staff? I will now open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We have none.
On this item, we have none, so I will close the public hearing and have discussion, or someone cares to make a motion, or both.
I'll make a motion to approve long-range planning project number LR22-0182, etc. Can I just say etc.? You may read the whole thing. Amending Title V and Seventeen in the Temecula Municipal Code as detailed in Ordinance 2023.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made, and seconded...
Can I just clarify that that means as amended by staff to add those two different provisions with respect to flagpoles?
That was my question.
Wait, say that again?
So, as part of staff's presentation, there were two proposed amendments to the ordinance with respect to the 50-foot flagpole, so that is part of the motion.
Okay, can we put except for the Shell station flag?
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner...I forget now. Charlie Trejo, and seconded by Commissioner Ruiz. I got that one right, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that passes four to zero. We now will move on to...oh, very nice report, by the way. You answered all of our commission questions very, very good, so excellent job, Mark. Appreciate that. Okay, item number three on our agenda tonight is planning application number PA21-0128, a Second Amendment to the Development Agreement by and between the City of Temecula and Lennar Homes Incorporated, a California corporation and Winchester Hills LLC, a California limited liability company to rescind the First Amendment to the Development Agreement and reinstate the original term of the Development Agreement for the Winchester property located within portions of Planning Area 12 of the Harvest and Specific Plan. And before I open the public hearing, and we have our speakers, we'll have a staff report by Mr. Cooper, I believe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairperson. Planning Commissioners, as you stated, this is planning application number PA210128, which is the Winchester Hills Development Agreement, Amendment Number Two. So, it is the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Temecula, Lennar Homes, and Winchester Hills LLC. The amendment will rescind the First Amendment to the Development Agreement and reinstate the original term of the Development Agreement for the Winchester Hills property, which is within portions of Planning Area 12 of the Harvest and Specific Plan. So, the Second Amendment is after the request of the applicant, who is Winchester Hills LLC, and not requested by the City of Temecula. The City of Temecula doesn't gain anything by the Second Amendment. The City of Temecula doesn't lose anything by the Second Amendment. It doesn't involve any actual development of property. It's just more of amending words on paper. Little bit of background, August of 2001, the City Council of the City of Temecula approved the original Development Agreement. October of 2007, the City Council, City of Temecula, approved the First Amendment to the Development Agreement. The amendment extended the term of the original Development Agreement. So, the original Development Agreement exempted the owner and/or developer from paying transportation uniform mitigation fees, or TUMF, and also multiple-species habitat conservation fees, or MSHCP. The First Amendment extended the term of the Development Agreement. Now, when that happened, the Western Riverside Council of Governments, or WRCOG, as well as the RCA, they took a position that as soon as you amended a Development Agreement, the owner-developer were no longer exempt from those fees. So those fees were going to have to be paid to those separate entities. Again, nothing coming into the city is just either a pass-through to those organizations or a payment directly to them. So, the Second Amendment, which is before you tonight, rescinds the extension of the term of that Development Agreement. So what that does is it doesn't make any other revisions to the Development Agreement with respect to any development on the property, and it allows the developer to seek concurrence from both WRCOG and the RCA that those projects are, again, exempt from the payment of those fees because you're reverting back to the original agreement. Now, the approval ultimately, or recommendation from you, or an approval at City Council does not automatically mean that they're, again, exempt. They still have to talk with those organizations and get that okay, and the city has already asked the applicant to reach out to those organizations so we can get something in writing. So they've already begun that process. So this is the amendment area. Harveston, you guys have seen it on several projects recently here, and then just to show you the different ownership groups. So you have Meritage Homes, which is the project that's under construction out there for Heirloom Farms. You have Hone Enterprises, which built the Audi. They own the property just south of Audi. You have Solana Winchester LLC, which is the 350 apartment homes. They've started out there doing a little bit of grading. You have the Lantern Crest at Temecula, which is the Lantern Crest Assisted Living Project. It's the large four-story assisted living that got approved about three years ago now, maybe three and a half years. Advantage Assets Acquisitions Number One, which is this parcel in purple, which our understanding at some point will be developed as a little commercial strip center. And then finally, you have the CRV AHV Prado Owner LLC, which is Prado, and they are not signing the Second Amendment. So we just wanted to make that known to the Planning Commission. They're not assigning on the amendment, so they would still be under the First Amendment. Terms environmental, the project is exempt from further review for Section 15061B3, which is the general rule. which is the general rule exemption, and that's because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the adoption of the ordinance may have a significant effect on the environment. With that, staff does recommend the Planning Commission adopt the proposed Planning Commission Resolution recommending City Council approval of the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement. I'm here for any questions that you may have, and we're fortunate enough to have the applicant here for any questions as well.
Great, thank you, Scott. Do we have questions of staff? We'll start over here, am I right? Commissioner Ruiz, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So great explanation there. Just so I understand this correctly, if, if this does not pass for whatever reason, are the, is the applicant then not eligible to, to go to the county or go to WRCOG and request the exemption? They need that from us first?
Correct, because we're a signee on the Development Agreement. So it's the, between us, Lennar, and the current applicant, and now they're adding the new property owners because the applicant sold off all the property, so they have to have all those signees in order for all of this to work out.
Got it. And, and if this does pass, you mentioned this does not secure that exemption, it just allows them to then go, have that conversation.
Correct, they still have to do the next step.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Can you go back to that cool slide where you put in all the little properties? That was awesome. I like that visual. Can you go back to that? Oh. So you were saying that, which is the property? Is it Prado that you said are not a signee?
Correct.
And is that, is that present a problem?
Not for, not for the city, it's not a problem. The applicant may be able to answer the question of why they're not assigned anymore, but the city attorney determined that they're not required to be a signee on the amendment.
Okay, but all the others are?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, that was a great visual to see where everybody is. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So the, the, both fees that are involved in this, is there a possibility that any of those fees would come back to the city for future projects, or based upon future projects for adding infrastructure to either that area or the city?
No, because all that area was, was previously developed by the applicant. All the infrastructure, the roads you see all through Harveston was already previously done.
Okay, so from a financial standpoint, it has zero impact on the city regardless of whether they get exempted or not?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Very good presentation. We will open the public hearing now, and we will hear from our speakers.
We have a speaker slip from the applicant, Steve Berry, and.
Is he our only speaker on this item? Great.
Thank you. Ken Roycroft.
So thank you, folks, for taking me in last minute. I represent Mercedes-Benz Temecula. My name's Ken Roycroft. We're here to just better understand any impact that would come from this project of Mr. Berry's. We had a sidebar outside. We're not here to oppose or agree, but we are dealing with, as Ron knows and some of the other team members here, we're having a real bear of a time with a construction project at Heirloom. We have an incredible amount of construction product, traffic, and it's, it's affecting our business. It's been discussed with everyone from Ron to John to Luke just the other day, and so when we see another notice that there's some other construction of homes, apartments, et cetera, on the street, it's very concerning. As some of you may or may not be aware, Stuart was in the meeting with us, our business is down probably 25% since the wall went up. We call it the Great Wall because you can't see our business any longer. So luckily, the city, thank God, you guys always have been so gracious to us, always so gracious, best city we've worked with. We work with a lot of them, and so we, we're big fans, but we're just getting crushed. I was over in the, the construction trailer just again two days ago, and, you know, I've gone over there before, when a guy was disrespectful to me, I was like, and so I see him again, and I said, listen, I'm not talking to you anymore. At the end of the day, Garth is really close, and you know Garth Blumenthal is, who's the dealer principal, he's my 30-year best friend. We work together very closely. I'm his operations, acquisitions, et cetera, and I live in town, and so in Temecula, and we're just, we're here. We almost shut down the street on Monday because it's just really, really, it's, it's crushing our business, and it's not out of, of trying to be good neighbors. We've been great neighbors. I have records of my emails since February 22. They were, they were using our Sprinter lot, or we're putting in the Sprinter project for their pipes, construction, parking vehicles, et cetera. That's private land. We would have even done it as neighbors, just let us know so we can have insurance right, or something to do it to be a good neighbor, nothing. So they say, they talk a good game. Jim Lane, who runs that project, is always very gracious, and I say that to his face and say it to you here in the, in the commission, but that's not what's getting done. I mean, just yesterday, I was told you, it was the, the construction trailer two days ago, probably, today, Wednesday, Monday or Tuesday, probably Monday. And here I am in the office, and there they go again the next day. It's not stopping. Now, I know you guys have the best intentions, and everything's going really well. I'm telling you, a big, big fan of this commission in the city. You guys are awesome. However, it's not getting to them, so they just do it anyway. And so our concern, Steve, Steve and I had a great conversation, he talked to Garth as well, we're open to sit down, he's going to talk to Garth on, you know, privately, but we need to make sure this doesn't further impact our business any further because this is just unacceptable. And the next stage for us would be have to say, okay, we have to do something different in trying to close down the project, because they're just not respecting their neighborly duties, if you will, for a project in front of us. It is, it's just not respecting our business at all. And as you might imagine, we're in two opposite businesses right now, right? They're in the gravel, you know, the gravel dropping and dust creating business, and we're in the luxury car business. And I use this as an example when I was in the construction trailer. If your wife or yourselves went in and bought a nice SUV first time behind that wheel and drove out of that, that lot to test drive, we've all had that experience if you bought a new car or any car. You don't know all the gadgets, though, do you? You're trying to figure it all out, and you pull out a little slow, you may be on the brakes a little bit, you might not hit the gas right, you might not know where all the directional are, and you're pulling out, and there's a 10-wheeler dump truck coming down with gravel flying down the road. As they also have done, is they open up the gate and let all the construction traffic out at the end of the day. Also, excuse my expression, but barreling out of there, and you know what I want to say, and that's a risk. Thirdly, if you have been down there at all, please take a ride and come visit our lovely campus at this point. There's a hole, you know, they're widening the road. It was supposed to be a three-week project, which we said, no problem. However, it's still a hole. It's now six weeks. We understand this rain. Where are the iron plates? Where is something to cover that? Because that's a private road, as far as we know, until we annex, which will, you know, we know it's going to happen, but it hasn't happened yet. They'll sue us. They're going to sue Garth personally if someone goes in that hole, and it's not, this is not acceptable. This is exposing someone who's a good taxpayer and really a good neighbor here, and a good business for the community, and we're not being respected by someone who came into our backyard and is really taking advantage of the situation. So I had to just get up here and talk about this. Mr. Berry, you've been very cordial. I know Garth's a good, you know, this is all good. We'll be able to work this out, since it's only a date, but I had to have a, have a say in front of you guys, because you guys make decisions that are affecting us, and this could be one of those decisions. Anyway, anything, that's, he's almost on my time, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to hear from the applicant now. Could you please step up and answer any questions we may have, or say a few words on your project?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Steve Berry. I've been doing business in Temecula since 1995, and when we gave the 12 acres of land for the freeway ramps in 2001, I was told, and the city was told, that the ramps would be completed by 2007. So they're behind schedule. But, and that's part of the frustration that you heard here. Most of what was said before is not related to what's on the docket tonight. It's dealing with the project and the other issues, and I was on the phone with Garth tonight, and I told him I'd be in touch with him, and I'll do what I can to try to help. But as it relates to what's in front of you tonight, what Scott said is, was a very good presentation, and we would ask that you go along with the city staff's recommendation and approve this and move this to City Council. And then that gives me the opportunity to be able to talk to those other agencies, I guess, and try to get this worked out. When we gave the 12 acres of land, we were given no money for it, because there was no money for it, but it had to be given at that time so that they could go to the feds and say, hey, we've got the land and we can do this. And now, I just had to be patient and wait 27 years for an opportunity to now be reimbursed for what we had given away back in 2001. So sum and substance, please approve the staff's recommendation, move this forward to the City Council, and in another forum, I'll sit down with everybody on the Mercedes-Benz side and see if there's anything I can do to help. Not sure, but I'll give it my very best shot. If you have any questions of me, I'm here to answer.
Very good, and we are here to, to consider the matter before us. So do we have any questions, Mr. Berry? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I will close the public hearing. We don't have any other speakers, do we?
No.
I will close the public hearing, and we will move on to discussion and potential motion. Anybody have any discussion? Anybody care to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll move the approval of planning application PA21-0128 as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion is made by Commissioner Ruiz and seconded by Commissioner Hegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's a four to zero vote. And as far as the issues related to your two businesses, hope you can work it out and get together, and certainly staff will be available to facilitate anything they can on these, on these items as well. So thank you for coming tonight and, and voicing your concerns and your project, so we appreciate that. Okay, we're at the point of our agenda where we have commissioner reports. Do we have any commissioner reports tonight? Mr. Hegel, looks like he's ready.
Just last night was Puesca Mountain Day, which I attended, and it was very, very well-attended. One of the things to note was that all of our high schools now have, in their curriculum, taught by the Science Department, about the quarry, the history of the situation with the quarry, and all about the Puesca Mountain and the Pachanga Tribe, and I thought that was really very unique and, and great, all started by a science teacher in Great Oak High School. So other than that, we did have a subcommittee meeting on the, one of the first agenda item tonight.
Any other commissioner reports?
Just wanted to make a comment, how much I appreciate staff taking the time and the tour that we were able to do and go around and see everything. You know, it's always one thing to see it here, or see it on the screen, and some of those, you know, that have been repetitive, you know, kind of go, but to actually see it out. The, the one thing that really stood out for me, and, you know, we always talk about the Temecula way, but things are done with purpose and intent. You know, we could see that through the development. I've been in plenty of other cities where something just gets thrown here and thrown here, and kind of, we'll, we'll deal with it later, and you could, you could see that's just not, you know, not the way here. So it was, it was really nice. I appreciate the opportunity to go out and do that. I will throw my Laney color code hat on and voice that I wasn't a fan of the rusted grates that I know probably planned for Jefferson Uptown project, and maybe we'll see those come in future, but overall, I thought it was a, it was a great opportunity to see what we're, what we're working on.
Oh, I like to see someone else cares. I like it. And I also really appreciated that tour. That was really informative and visual for us. And I went to the Puesca last year, so that, I didn't know that about the high school, so that's great. And last night at the City Council meeting, the Quality of Life Master Plan was approved by the City Council, and a lot of gratitude to our own Matt Peters here, who did a lot of work on that. And I think the, well, I think that the final product is great and is something that we can be proud of, and, and like you said, kind of tying into what you said about having intent, I think that's what we do as a city, is we try to plan. I, I think, you know, not to pat ourselves on the back, but this city is planned very well, when you look at other cities, and I appreciate being able to be a part of that. So I, I really felt like it was an honor to be part of the commission, the Quality of Life Master Plan and Blue Ribbon Committee, so I appreciate being able to do that. That was a, a great opportunity and a great learning experience on, on what we want to see happen with our city. So that was approved last night.
Just want to make a comment too on our tour. As I made the presentation before council last night on our last meeting, it was, it just dawned on me as I looked at the list of all the different types of projects that we've approved, and just checking off the boxes like crazy for everything that we're doing for the city. So compliments to the planning staff, you're doing great, and we just keep hoping the people come to, to do the right thing the Temecula way. We appreciate that. Okay, on our next, our next item is commission subcommittee. Did we have any subcommittee meetings? I don't believe we did, so we will move on to Community Development Director Report. So Stuart?
And Luke, do not have anything for you tonight, other than for Matt to give an update on the Quality of Life Master Plan. So anything to add, Matt?
I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Turley Trejo for representing the Planning Commission and serving on the Blue Ribbon Committee. I think it was an interesting process, to say the least, and just wanted to say thanks for serving on that committee.
Okay. I think we're to the Community Development. Well, we already did that. We're doing the Public Works Director. I always get this one messed up, though.
It's all right.
My tenure is nearing the end.
We do have a few repaving projects that are going on around the city, one being Yenez Road. We've talked with Mercedes-Benz about that, and we're going to continue to talk about those issues. Luke's given us very specific direction on how to tackle the problems that are happening over there, but there is going to be a CIP project coming in as well. And more repaving on Winchester, Nicholas, Meadowview, and Solana, so those are all the areas that are being done currently. So I would say that most definitely the Yenez, Winchester, Nicholas areas are going to be impacted, and so if you receive any questions or anything, please let us know if there's anything we can do to help with giving some information, but that's ongoing right now. And then also along the lines of the Winchester Hills area, I'm sure that all of you are aware that we had to rebid the French Valley Phase Two interchange project due to a, a question about the bidding process and a complaint about it, a challenge. So therefore, it is being rebid right now, but, so we're now targeting, instead of December, we're targeting a January groundbreaking. So we turned that around pretty quickly at the, not yesterday's council meeting, the previous one, so if you have any questions about that as well. And that concludes everything Pat told me to talk about.
Thank you, Ron. As usual, a fine report.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Ron, we, I brought up a couple of times, trying to incorporate some of the, like, the GIS mapping for some of the projects in town. Has that been looked at from Public Works also, where if there is some sort of construction paving, that, that information would be made available as well?
Yes, that is being kind of coordinated between planning and GIS, and we're going to piggyback on that and start adding some Public Works projects. So currently, there are some things online that you can find, but I think we need a more robust, interactive kind of app that shows current projects.
Yeah.
So we're working on that with GIS.
Perfect, great, thank you.
Well, that wraps up another exciting version of the Planning Commission meeting, and we are going to adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting of December 7. So thank you all for coming tonight. It's nice to see people in the audience. We appreciate your participation. Thank you.